Good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. It is 1:17 PM. My name is Time Answer Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards. To his left is the County Manager Mira Chavez. We are taking up a topic, plat alterations follow-up from 1:15 to 2:00 PM. The public may follow along through a live stream on the Thurston County YouTube channel. And with that, I'll go directly to County Manager.
Thank you and good afternoon. While you were here today, there's a follow-up to the May 19, 2001 briefing where staff walk you through the process. As we call the Board of County Commissioners can exercise your legislative authority for plat alterations requests. What you will hear today is about two specific requests. And attached to your packet is the staff report. And also you will hear from the staff the overall recommendation related to the two requests. There is a decision needed from you. Obviously, I will not ask you to make a decision today. I will bring that next Tuesday as we practice that. Brett?
Good afternoon Commissioners. Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Brett Boras and I'm the Development Services Manager for Community Planning and Economic Development. In summary of what County Managers went over, yes, on May 19th, 2021, a briefing was held before the County Commission to go over the role and responsibilities for plat alterations. An alteration is a request to change something on a plat that has already been recorded. And an alteration, according to the Thurston County Code and according to the RCWs, requires a legislative body to make that decision, which is the County Commission. For the Thurston County Code as well as RCWs, the Board of County Commissioners has three options in making a decision on a plat alteration. They can approve the requested alteration. The Board can also not approve the requested alteration. And the Board has the option to request a public hearing to be held before the public. So when we are going through these two plat alteration requests, please note that those are the three options that are provided to the Board of County Commissioners. And then, as a reminder, a plat is a recorded subdivision of land. So for an example, someone decides to subdivide one large lot into four individual lots. That would be a plat. And again, just to repeat myself, a final plat or a recorded plat is a plat or subdivision that has gone through all the process of subdivision and has been reviewed and approved to be in accordance with codes and ordinance for all departments of review, which include Community Planning and Economic Development, Public Works, as well as Environmental Health. Before I present the first plat alteration, are there any questions that I can answer?
Questions?
No, sir.
No questions, that's enough.
And if I may, ask for permission to share my screen?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm hoping you guys can see this?
Yep.
So the first alteration request is a plat that was final or reported in 2020 and it took one large lot and turned it into four separate lots. As part of the plat process, the conditions of the driveway were located on the face of the plat. And what I mean by the conditions of the driveway highlighted in yellow are what was recorded as being the ingress and egress or access point to each lot. And so as you can see here, Lot 1 and 2 would share a common driveway and Lot 3 and 4 would share a common driveway. After this plat was recorded, applications were received to place the driveways in the locations. And it turns out they were placed in the wrong location. Although it was approved through Public Works, the actual construction and the location are not in keeping with the plat as it's shown here. So the request before you today is to change the approved access points for each lot abutting Reader Road as recorded in the December 2020 plat. The proposed plat, I'm sorry, the proposed locations are on this sheet, which is in your packet, which show that the highlighted areas are where they are actually built. Another reason for the requested plat alteration by the applicant is if my mouse is working, you can see these hashed lines along Reader Road. The hash line is tagged as no access allowed. So after a review of the requested plat alteration, it was recommended for approval before the Board of County Commissioners by Public Works Real Estate Services, by our Addressing Officer, by our Environmental Health Office, as well as our Public Works Department. And so the request before you today is one of three options. You have the opportunity to approve, not approve, or hold a public hearing upon the request of relocating and addressing the actual location of the access points to this plat. In addition to that, I will end on staff is available for any questions that you have.
I have a question. Brett, so somebody in county government made, I don't know, a mistake on assigning these locations?
I can't speak on the fact of whether it was a mistake or not. I can just speak to the fact that it was not constructed consistent with the plat.
We have an applicant here. Can I ask that applicant if he could give me an explanation for that?
This is yours.
This is mine. Yeah, I'm the real estate agent. I'm the listing agent for the Lepleys, who are the owners. They're the applicants. So what happened is we had the-
One second, let me get through board questions and I think we'll have time to address that. Brett, I didn't understand when you said about the hatched area not being permitting access. I don't understand the significance of that reality to this question.
So the hashed area was placed on the plat per requirement from Public Works to identify areas not to have access. And if it would benefit, I'm zooming in right now and you can see the words "no access allowed" and it's identifying this symbol of a hash line.
But you're saying it was constructed that there is access?
That is correct.
And so, I mean, I'm seeing this proposal as basically, instead of sharing 3 and 4, there's going to be a shared point between 2 and 3? Such that the same concept but just moved over to one parcel?
Yes, sir.
And then that leaves, what, 4 doesn't have access?
4 will have access from this same highlighted area.
On this side.
Via an easement.
Yeah, I don't see any highlighting on 4.
It'll utilize the highlighted area to access number 4. The driveway is not constructed on Lot number 4 as of yet.
Trying to take this-
Maybe we'll hear from Mr. Sorry to catch your name.
Paul Clink.
Clink?
Paul Clink. I work at Van Dormerelty.
Or does it catch it?
It should catch it.
Do you hear that, Brett?
If you're gonna come, come to the table, because then our micro system will catch you.
Is the public who's here?
I do hear, yes.
Okay, I just wanted the sound check.
So there are two maps. The first one was the approved large lot subdivision without the highlights. And that shows the aprons were supposed to be constructed between Lot 1 and 2 on the corner and on Lot 3 and 4.
Yeah, see that?
The contractor, for other reasons, mistook the locations and mismeasured and put them 165 feet in the wrong direction on the wrong lot lines. So in-
Not a mistake by county government?
I don't believe so. Nobody's saying that, no. No, I don't think that's it. We're just needing this approval to correct this mistake rather than having the owner have to deconstruct the aprons and reconstruct them in the right places. In this case, keeping them where they're at, ineffective, will change nothing. Five years from now, when Lot 1 will be allowed to be split into two lots. So you're still only going to have two accesses to a county right-of-way, where there will be, would have been two accesses in five years anyway. So we're just gonna keep, what we're asking is we just keep them where they're at. From the, you see the highlighted area between, across Lot 3? That's going to be an easement we're gonna record. So that Lot 4 can cross Lot 3 from the access point to Lot 2 and 3. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so they're gonna be able to go in on the, if this is north-south, yeah. They're gonna be able to go in on the northeast corner of Lot 3, cross all the way across the parcel through an easement and access Lot 4.
Yes, sir.
And that, that's, okay. I think I understand then. And Brett, that's, it sounds like everybody's okay with, everybody, meaning the different departments that you listed out, are okay with that because it respects the hatching and the minimal amount of easement. I don't know what all the considerations are about why the plat was the way it originally was, but-
So they put hatchings there so that in the future, homeowners don't enter public right-of-ways from unauthorized locations. So now they know they're of record that they can't cross those hash marks. And of course, the aprons had been installed on the hash marks or in an area that was hashed.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. I'm just trying to solve a riddle with this thing.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's good, that's good information. Okay, County Manager, anything you want to ask or?
No, I was just curious. If you see the approved drawing, can you move to the approved, the existing lot? Okay Brett, can you move to the other map? The one above. Today, existing. There you go. You see a hashed area, a yellow area on Lot number 4?
Yes.
Right? So is the proposal to eliminate that? That and replace it with, to cross Lot 3, is that intent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can't tell if you're talking to me or Brett.
I'm talking to Brett.
You told me Brett.
It's me and the answer is yes.
We have a twin here, Brett. Okay.
Okay Brett, it sounds like there's no more board questions on this one. Do you want to move to the next one or how are we going about this?
I can definitely move to the next one.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, can you punch it up? So the second one is called the Walker Short Plat Alteration. It's a request to, again, alter a plat that's been recorded and subdivided. This plat was recorded in 2002 and it created two lots. And, I'm sorry, I'm not sharing as I speak. My apologies. And hopefully you guys can see this? So this map is also in your, in the bag of information?
You've got it.
Okay, and so this is a request, the original plat was recorded in 2002 and it was recorded with two lots and a tract of land which is titled Tract A. The request today is to remove Flat Condition Number 4 from the face of the plat. And if I may, I will squeeze into Flat Condition Number 4. And I'd like to read it out loud. The request is to remove, again, sorry, Condition Number 4, which states Tract A is a future development tract. This tract can only be developed when the City of Olympia Sanitary Sewer is available to the site. At the time of future development, the existing residents on Lot 1 and 2 must also be connected to sanitary sewer and the existing onsite sewage system must be abandoned for Article 4 of the Thurston County Sanitary Code. Staff has reviewed the request to remove this condition from the face of the plat and it has been reviewed by all departments. And this is one where we have some recommended denials for this request. And in your packet, the City of Olympia notes that Tract A can only be developed when the City of Olympia Sanitary Sewer is available to the site and is also stating recommending denial that the sewer sanitation, I'm sorry, the sewer situation in the area has not changed and the city sewer system is not currently available. City sewer would need to be extended from Yelm Highway, which also includes a lift station with associated forceps. Additionally, the sewage system plans for the City of Olympia is also in alliance with Thurston County Sewage System Plan. And they're recommending denial as well, stating the proposal does not meet the requirements of the Thurston County Sanitary Code. In addition to that, Community Planning and Economic Development also reviewed the request and is recommending denial, noting that proposed alteration would not meet density requirements per county subdivision ordinance if approved. This is one where I will do my best to explain, but I'm assuming there's going to be a few questions afterward. So, an exception to the subdivision ordinance was applied to this specific plat. Tract A is a set aside tract for future development. That future development is intended to meet current zoning densities for once water and sewer, I'm sorry, once sewer is available and provided. As it stands right now, this plat was recorded not meeting density, but with the exception that Tract A will eventually have to meet density in accordance with Thurston County Codes and ordinances. So therefore, recommending a denial of removing of Condition Number 4 on the face of the plat. I also have Scott McCormick and Don Peebles available for any questions that you may have related to this plat alteration.
Well, that's a clear reply. Okay, so I guess, you know, I have a few questions. I don't know who wants to go first.
So for my question, I guess I just jumped in.
Yeah, jump in.
Is, I feel kind of how Commissioner Edwards feels right now, this is as clear as mud. So, the plat alteration that they're seeking is to remove Section 4 and basically not wait until everything's connected to sewer? Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, can I follow up on that question then?
Yes.
When is that about to happen? Do we know?
Unfortunately, there are no plans per the City of Olympia comments, so therefore I cannot provide you with a plan.
But when this was done 20 years ago, there was a plan to do something? Or they, I wouldn't think they would have done it if there wouldn't have been a plan in place.
They, I know that the City of Olympia does have a sewage system plan. I do not know when monies are allocated for the expansion of sewer system.
Brett, you mentioned that the implication of what you said is that if sewer is connected, then county density or zoning automatically changes and it becomes permissible to have more units. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
That is correct. I believe this is in the R4 to 8 zone of the Olympia UGA and when subdividing a piece of property, it is required that subdivision be two density of R4 to 8 units per acre. In this case, this was a two lot with a Tract A and that Tract A, once sewer is available, is intended to meet the density.
And can you say more about the environmental health recommendation? Is it, it just says does not meet requirements of sanitary code? I mean, is that an irreverent, is that an unattainable, is that an unattainable obstacle? Or what exactly is the problem with that?
Well, if I may, I would like to defer to Don Peebles for that.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Don Peebles, Senior Environmental Health Specialist with Public Health and Social Services Department, Environmental Health Division. So, environmental health, our sanitary code requires that any new development within the urban growth area meets the city's wastewater management plan. And so based on Olympia's recommendation of denial, citing that the proposal doesn't meet the goals of their wastewater management plan, therefore, we have followed suit with recommending denial.
Okay. County Manager, you have another question?
Yeah, go ahead. So, I'm trying to delude a little bit for me to understand the comment. That if the Board approves removing this restriction, they can go ahead and develop and they have to build a sanitary septic system?
That is correct. There's no sewer available, so any development would need to utilize non-
The City of Olympia sanitary code doesn't allow to build new septic systems in their UGA? Is that the intent?
So, there's kind of multi-parts to it. Four subdivisions, new subdivisions within the urban growth area must connect to a sewer system or a community onsite septic system that the city owns and operates. This plat or subdivision was completed in 2002 and the septic systems that are on Lots 1 and 2 were already there. So the property was already developed and they simply were subdividing the lots to have them, you know, on Lot 1 and 2. At this point, again, our code requires any new development within the urban growth area to meet the city's wastewater management plan and they're saying this proposal does not.
Because the septic system is not owned and operated by the City of Olympia, will not be?
Correct. It would be an individual septic system since it's one lot only.
When you say, so you're talking about like the step systems that like Lacy has? Were you talking about a?
No, actually, what I'm referring to with a community onsite septic system?
Yeah, what is that?
So, and I should back up a little bit and say that in 1992, the Thurston County Sewage General Plan was entered into with Thurston County and the three adjacent cities, Olympia, Lacey, and Temwater. And it specifies that any new subdivision within their urban growth areas will connect to a sewer system or a community onsite septic system. And that's a system that serves two or more residential lots or has certain flows above a designated capacity. And the cities then would be responsible to own and operate them and with future intention of connecting to their sewer when it's available.
So the community septic system, it will have a drain field? So the overflow will be onsite?
Correct, and, correct.
Okay. And, okay, I got, so the, is, the community septic system, we have one, I believe, in Thomasan, just to bring perspective, right?
Well, and I just want to clarify that a community septic system is not possible on this lot since it's one individual lot.
No, I understand, just to bring perspective to the Commissioners as to what a community septic system is. Because I think it's either Beverly Beach or Thomasan is where we'll have a community septic system, where the property owners bring all that to the community septic system and it is a large drain field as to how we manage the requirements.
Correct.
Good job.
Is this just a little bigger than one acre? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, a little bit over.
And, and then, how many houses are proposed to be built on that acre? What's the rest of the plat talk about? What's the density?
So, what was, I believe, proposed as a concept of meeting density was up to nine townhouse units.
Okay, I mean, is there, if we change one thing, can we change another thing at the same time? I mean, I kind of hate to take complete use away from a property, but nine systems on an onsite system, that doesn't sound like that'll be very good.
It will not be feasible.
Huh?
It will not be feasible.
Well, no, I mean, it doesn't sound like it. So, I mean, could we say until such time as the City of Olympia brings connectable sewer to the location, there may only be one family resident on the property, or one family residence on the property? And then, I don't want to be in the business of managing some new sewer system like we are at a Thomasan and I'm not saying that's the way it would go, but sometimes when those things go belly up, we end up inheriting a problem.
We're the lucky.
Yeah, we're the lucky ones, right? And so, Brett, is that something we could do? Because at some point, Olympia will be coming that way and in the meantime, we can put a piece of property on the tax rolls and everybody can be okay, maybe not happy, but okay, just to make things perk right along. But, I mean, a lot, an acre lot with one house on it doesn't seem like that's outlandish.
So I think that would be a good question for Travis. We're gonna put him on the spot. Whether we can change the density just by having a language on a plat?
Well, is Scott here?
Travis.
Or Travis, is Travis here?
Yeah, I see his name up there. Yeah, I see his name up there.
So you're saying, so, well, we've got-
I'm just trying to figure out a way around it.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is, would, that might address environmental health concern because it's only one. It may or may not address Olympia's concern, we have to ask them. And then you're saying, and then Romero's suggesting it might not address the septic concern, that's a question for Travis.
Because I love if, if density can be changed because it's zoning by adding language on, uh, language of a plat.
I, I mean, to me, it just makes it more usable.
Sure, and Travis.
Oh, is Travis on?
I see him.
Okay.
I think I see him. Small, but, small but mighty.
Well, yeah, I, I'm trying to track the conversation here, folks, but it sounds like, you know, and I, I have questions for the planners too, that the existing lot one, a lot two, there is a home and a current drain field that serves those residences. Uh, and the proposal is to subdivide, so I, I think as, is it, isn't it correct that they currently are, you know, in use? In other words, they're not vacant lots at this point, or are they not developed at this point?
No, one and two are developed, I think.
One and two are developed, and they do have septic systems.
Right, so it seems to me that, that they have permission through, as a non-conforming legal use at this point. Question is whether the county's willing to provide additional uses beyond their current, you know, their current, um, non-conforming use. I think that's the question. But, again, I, I, I can't pretend to follow everything, this is, this has obviously got a lot of detail.
Well, it was clear as mud to a couple of us already, so you fit right in.
If the land use lawyers having trouble, I feel better.
But I, I, I will say this, I, I think that, you know, I, I don't see much option for the, you know, for the county to, to grant the request. You know, I was kinda curious about the community, but, you know, that sounds like that wasn't, you know, for example, why didn't this say that they can either get a community system or a city sewer? It's just sewer, city sewer, but that seems, you know, logical because as staff have identified and the county manager, it just isn't even close to feasible to have a community system serve these, these plants, right? And so, I, I think there's no question that the recommendations are, are good ones. You know, in terms of Commissioner Edwards' thoughts, I, I'm, I'm kinda, kinda thinking through that too and wondering, hey, you know, we, are we, and somehow, is there any way for us to accommodate the applicant in some way? Although I, I think as it stands, uh, even if you were, you know, we could modify section four to clarify that, you know, lot one and lot two are non-conforming and they're legal, but further subdivision cannot be accomplished without sewer. You know, there's things we could probably do to clarify that, but my sense is with or without that language, they do have a legal right to maintain their existing, you know, single residence and single, you know, single onsite septic that serve that single residence. So I, I, I think you could do it for clarity, but on the other hand, I think they also have a legal right at this point.
So are you saying my idea can fly? One, one house on, on one acre?
I don't think you quite said that.
Well, I got it. You know, I mean, you adjust that around a little bit, that's what lawyers do.
It's trenching, right? It's trenching.
Ah, yeah, I, you know, I'm, oh, okay, I probably should mute myself at some point, but I, I'm, you know, I'm struggling with the concept. So at, at this point, Brett, if, are they violating the zoning density at this point as it stands, or are they confused?
They are not violating the zoning density as it stands because of condition number four, uh, stating that they need sewer to be available in order to subdivide Track A. And for point of clarification, the request, uh, my understanding, or not my understanding, but the request on condition number four is solely for Track A. So lot one and two are, are, at this point, intended to remain single-family homes, and once sewer is available, lots one and two will be required to, uh, connect to sewer as well.
Okay, I, so it's lot, it's, that's, I apologize, I think I misunderstood some of this. Track A is where this proposed subdivision, and Track A is where condition four creates issues for them to subdivide A. And so Commissioner Edwards is suggesting that they could add a single home. However, I, I think, I, I don't, okay, I, I don't think there's a legal option there because of the restrictions in the sanitary code and the UGA rules that apply that staff described, because they would be in violation even if you added a single house on a Track A. So, yeah, I think one and two can continue, but Track A would, it sounds like, would be in violation with our current, um, our current code.
And maybe this is a, a good reminder for the Board of County Commissioners that there are three options. Uh, it can be approved, the request, it can be not, to not approve the request, and it could also be to hold a public hearing.
And what would the public hearing be? I'm just curious. I mean, it still will be the two options for the board.
That's correct, but it provides the opportunity for public comment if the board so wish.
Okay, I got it.
Let me ask you a question, Brett. On the map here, we've got lot one, lot two, and Track A. But next to Track A and lot two, there's, looks like there's a development already in play there, I suppose? Is that, or is that a future?
Do it on dotted line?
Yeah, the dotted lines.
With a little cul-de-sac?
In the, with a little cul-de-sac there.
I believe, I believe that is in existence, right?
In existence?
Correct.
Existence. And so, those have onsite septic systems, I take it?
Um, Don, would you know if those have onsite septic systems?
I mean, it must not be municipal sewer, because that's pretty darn close, you know?
Right, I would presume the same. I, I don't know what subdivision that is, but we know that sewer is not available at this location, and, um, so yes, they would be served by onsite septic systems.
They're hard to determine how old that subdivision is. They, they exist. Because it could be, could have been built under different standards.
Oh, sure. Yeah, but, I mean, if the sewer isn't there and somebody's living there, I hope they got a septic system.
Well, I hope so.
The only thing I'm thinking, when, I mean, I think everybody's making good points. The, the only thing I'm, I would add is just, as I think about Olympia's position and the UGAs and how we work together with municipalities with our joint plans, we, you know, a lot of times, that system, and we need to upgrade it and get it where it needs to be, which is what we're doing, but perf, you know, we're, we often do that, and it, it benefits development. I mean, like, in the Lacy situation where they might allow things that maybe the county wouldn't allow, but because it's an urban growth area, it's more appropriate really to do it in, in the municipal way, and that's what the joint plans are designed to kind of work through. And so I think that we have to be, have a consistent approach. I mean, the fact that in this case Olympia's rules are maybe less permissive in this case because they're worried about trying to get everybody hooked up to sewer, um, I think we still need to kind of take a consistent approach. Commissioner Edwards' idea, if it did fly, I would want to ask Olympia if they would then, you know, modify their position based on the proposed modification of condition four. Because I think we need to have that kind of consistent way of working in the UGAs with the cities. Usually it works, it's, usually it's a pro-development approach to do it that way, in my experience. You know, the fact that it's, it's, it's kind of working the other way this time, I don't think means we should just throw it out, because ultimately, it's Olympia's responsibility, I think, down the road, we see that. That's how it's set up as a UGA, anyway.
Yeah, no, I agree with what you just said, Commissioner Mansour. For me, I have like two things. One, would, um, the, uh, person who put in the plat alteration, would they just be, one, just okay with one, uh, house, um, for now? Uh, and two, um, you know, would the city of Olympia be willing to, um, to, you know, review this and go forward or, or still say no? So I, those are kind of like the two points that I feel like, um, you know, not to say that the option is not good, you know, just to have, but I would want to see that it was okay with the other parties involved first.
Brett, you still there?
Yes, sir.
Could you stop, could you stop showing your screen?
Oh, thank you.
We got a five-minute warning here.
Yeah. This proposal was put forward by somebody, and they must have had a reason for putting it forward. Did they give a reason why they thought we would take this off, this section four, I guess? Why we would do that? Did they give an argument like, uh, well, the city said they were gonna put sewer out there in 2010, but they haven't got to it? Or, here's a plan from the city of Olympia's 2010 that said they were gonna, you know, it, it, I don't understand how come they're asking us to intervene in something that-
At this particular-
At this time, yeah, I mean, what, the sewer system isn't gonna be there until 2025, and they don't want to wait until then? I just, I don't have enough information to make a good push on, I mean, I generally want to help somebody out to do something, as long as it doesn't hurt the environment. But here, I'm kind of questioning, why would they want us to do that? Why are they asking us, I don't know, to break the rules or to stretch things farther or what? I don't know. I, I hate making decisions on not enough information, so, although I would be amenable to, you know, if we could do it, but it sounds like Travis says maybe we can't do that, so. Anyway.
Do you know anything about that, Brett?
Well, if I may, I would like to defer to our associate planner, Scott McCormick, who has had, uh, interactions with the applicant.
Okay.
Hi, Scott McCormick, associate planner here. Um, I just wanted to clarify something. The request is actually not for a subdivision, it's just to be able to build a single-family residence on this parcel. Wanted to clarify that. And the problem is that if they did build a single-family residence, that would basically preclude future subdivision because, um, there just wouldn't be enough room to get the density needed to meet, meet minimum density.
Well, why do we care about that? It's their land, right? If they want to forego the possibility of subdividing, why is that our concern?
Um, because it's the zoning requirements.
Uh, how, how about this, Scott? If they wanted to, could they build a single-family residence on that property? And when the city of Olympia gets sewer out there, tear that place down and do whatever it takes to meet the code, ten, eight families or whatever? Is that possible?
Well, I, I, I don't think the, the board can dictate-
We can't tell them that, but-
Well, can dictate, somebody built a home, and you only have, you can live there or own the home until a sewer comes in and then destroy it.
Well, no, I mean, I'm following up on, on Ty's question about why, I, I guess it's gonna limit their ability.
So Scott, the, the, if that's the application, was Olympia, and Olympia weighed in, were they aware that that was the application? I mean, that kind of-
Yes, they were aware of that.
So they don't care that it's just one? They don't, they, it's not consistent with their plan and-
So I guess the benefit, I, I guess they, seeing from Olympia's perspective, if they bring sewer to this area, they can, they, they, this property will be allowed to build nine units, as opposed to right now, eliminating this clause, it will be only one. And then the city of Olympia will not have any, uh, interest in bringing sewers per se anytime soon because there already is a septic system.
Isn't there a, uh, something connected to this about the density requirements that goes with this plat? Isn't that a essential part of this conversation? That this tract has to subdivide into nine lots to meet density requirements for the entire plat?
And, and that was my initial question, whether by eliminating this clause, uh, number four out of the plat, face of the plat, is that by default, we are changing the density? That was a question.
Travis' question?
Yeah, because that, that, I, I, I don't think that by, that by removing a clause on the face of the plat, automatically, we are removing the requirements of the density.
Yeah, I, I, I would have to review, I mean, I'm looking at the conditions right now, and I'm trying to zoom in on what, on the material you shared. I'm assuming there's some restriction, I mean, the density restrictions are there, um, whether or not the plat, you know, describes it or not. You know, I, I, it's just not, I'm not familiar with the zoning enough to understand when those are triggered, to be honest with you.
I, I'm not either, and I, this is the first, I mean, we don't really deal with this in the county, in this type of trigger, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Sounds good. I like that.
So, uh-
Yeah, I think it requires maybe a, a follow-up discussion, and maybe, um, I can bring this item for, uh, board's approval in two weeks. We'll not give you enough time, uh, Travis and the staff to look into that question, whether by removing, uh, uh, item number four out of the face of the plat, would automatically remove the density?
The density is addressed in item number two.
Right.
So, and that's what I wanted to, I wanted- Because I wanted to understand, because the property owners, the applicant, the applicant seems to believe-
That's good.
They buy, if the board approves by removing item number four, automatically, he or she can build a single-family home here. But if the density doesn't allow, so how we gonna be resolving that conflict?
Do we have to hold out the let-lease issue?
Yeah.
Based on this, can we move that one?
Well, yeah, you can move one.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
It's not, it's not all together.
I think the board's in concurrence on that.
Yeah.
So, uh, you hear that, Brett?
Three thumbs.
The board approved the-
Official three thumbs on that one.
The large lot alterations from, uh, on the first one.
Whatever needs to happen, let's make that happen, and then-
Yeah, so and then we'll hold the follow-up, uh, conversation on the Walker short line.
I understand. Thumbs up for, uh, the let-lease plat alteration, and, uh, two weeks for, uh, additional staff review based off of the density question.
Yeah. And, uh, what are the next steps to make a reality, the, uh, large plat alterations? Just changing the plat and then we'll re-sign the face of the plat?
That is absolutely correct. A, a submittal from, uh, the let-lease or the representative to re-record, uh, the alteration or to record the alteration will require signatures and recording.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you to the staff members up there on this item. Thank you, Brett, Scott, Don, Travis.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. And we will move, uh, straight into our two OPM briefing. We gotta do a different zoom.
We'll cover a different zoom.
Can I go get water?
Yep.